This is a special session of Bloomington Common Council for December 21st, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Scambleri? Rosenbacher? Sims? Volin?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Sandberg?
Here.
Okay.
Thank you. Our only item on the agenda is a presentation of a report on council standing committees and a discussion of that report. Is Becky Bustani going to present the report or is Steven Lucas going to present it?
I will be giving a quick rundown of the report and I believe Becky is also here to help answer any specific questions about how she how she compiled the data in the report, so.
Great, thank you. Please go ahead.
A moment as folks are still rolling in, I will. Well. Excuse me just a moment as I restart that report, it looks like it went blank for some reason. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So. Just as way of a bit of background, in early 2020, when the council was debating standing committees and discussing their implementation with the administration and among council members, I heard a call for a report like this or a review of standing committees at the end of the year. So that is what prompted council staff to work to gather up certain information and data for the council's consideration and for review by any other interested folks. So this report attempts to look at council meetings and activities over the past either five or four or five years. Some information Becky was able to gather up going back to 2015. Lower down, you'll see we looked at 2016 through 2020. The report is broken up into sections and section one looks at both the number and duration of council meetings going back to 2015. And table A, as you can see, breaks out the number of meetings by meeting type. That is regular session, special session, committee of the whole, and then any other council committees. We did not look at council work sessions, council interview committees, or any council standing committees held to look at border commission appointments. You'll see the number of meetings has been increasing over the last several years, although I should note that for a date like December the 9th of this month, where the council had a special session followed by four individual standing committee meetings, that would have counted as five meetings in this table. Whereas in years past, had the committee of the whole convened to consider the same legislative items, the meeting would have counted as one special session and then one committee of the whole. So the number of meetings, you know, should be viewed with that in mind, but that leads into table B, which is the total duration of those of those meetings. As you can see, going back to 2015, the total time spent in council meetings has been trending upward. In this year, the the meetings lasted just under 11,000 minutes total. In table C, you'll see that the meeting duration has been averaged out for an average length of each of those meeting types. In section two, and if there are questions along the way, I'm happy to stop where I can get through the entire report and Becky and I can answer questions at the end. Section two discusses a concept that I think was one of the benefits that went along with standing committees, which was that not all nine council members need to be in attendance at each committee meeting. They certainly could be, but each standing committee has four members. And so this table here explains that while the total meeting duration of the council's meetings in 2020 totaled just under 11,000 minutes, any given council member would have only needed to attend about 8,700 of those minutes. That's because regular sessions, special sessions, committee of the wholes, those were attended by all nine council members. But there were 46 of those meetings where only four of you had to be in attendance and those meetings totaled about 3,500 minutes. So you'll see this calculation lower down in a few other tables and all it's trying to show is what is the average time any given council member would have had to be in attendance. Section three of the report looks at meetings and the duration of those meetings from the point of view of items of legislation trying to move through the legislative cycle. So I think again during during the debate at the start of the year over over standing committees, there was a question about how long it would take a piece of legislation to sort of move through the council's process and these tables here tried to try to examine that. I will note that there were, going back to 2016, there were a handful of items that took significantly longer than than most other pieces of legislation. Those items are listed here and the tables include averages both with those items included and without so that council can get an idea of sort of what the the normal amount of time is. I think the best example is the the UDO process that took place over 2019. That came in at just under 2,000 minutes. So that significantly moves the average one way or the other. Table E lists the number of pieces of legislation the council considered over the past five years, the total time it took to consider those items of legislation across all meeting types, and then the average length it took that piece of each piece of legislation to move through the move through the cycle. The far right column, again in table E, takes out the six long pieces of legislation in those averages. Moving down to table F, I believe this is where we attempted to measure just the time spent at regular and special sessions in considering legislation. So this table tries to exclude general public comment. It excludes time spent on reports from the mayor and city offices or council members and just looks at the time the council spent deliberating on on legislation. Again, the table you can you can see here includes both the total time spent for the total number of legislation legislative items and then includes both an average time spent per piece of legislation and an adjusted average where we take out those six long pieces of legislation to show an adjusted average. Table G looks at the average amount of time a piece of legislation spent in committee meetings, both committee of the whole and standing committees, again, going back to 2016. And I will note here too that the two last columns, I believe, include a calculation of the average amount of time any given council member would have had to spend per piece of legislation. And again, I'm happy to clarify if any of this is confusing at the end. Section four just looks at standing committee meetings primarily in 2020, but I believe it also notes the land use committee meetings in 2018 and 2019. This breaks out the standing committee meetings by each individual committee. It lists how often they met, how long those meetings lasted, and also separates those meetings out to include meetings where legislation was considered and in meetings where legislation was not considered in the length of each of those categories. Table I again looks at the length of time spent per legislative item in each of the council's standing committees, again, primarily in 2020, but also includes land use data from 2018 and 2019. Finally, section five just makes a few notes about any oddities. I will note one of the the major impacts for how the council operated this year was that we were, the council was meeting over Zoom for much of 2020 and it's not clear what impact that had. I think anecdotally, we've seen an increase in public participation. We did not have time yet to go back and count number of public comments or length of public comments both before and after we started operating via Zoom. For the tables that look at how much time was spent on a given piece of legislation, we did not separate out the public comment on that piece of legislation. So some items of of legislation are simply more more controversial or of greater public interest. And so the time that was spent taking public comment on those items wasn't separated out. I'll also note that the the downtime between standing committee meetings, so using December 9th as an example again, there were four standing committee meetings, I believe, scheduled for that evening. Because each of those committees was scheduled to start at a specific time, if the meeting ahead of that ended early, there would be some downtime. And so the the minutes, the total duration of the meetings was just based on when the meeting started and ended. And if there was downtime, that was that was ignored. And I will also say that the report here does not look at anything beyond just sort of raw data and and meeting length. We did not look at any perceptions from either the public or staff members, the administration. I know at the beginning of 2020, again, I think there was a discussion on, you know, how folks are working with these standing committees and what is their perception. So I know that the administration has several several staff members here today to comment on that. I will also say we did not look at the amount of staff time that that went into standing committees to see whether this had been more or less efficient for the staff members preparing and bringing legislation forward to the council and any prep work that went in ahead of coming to council. So those are all just things to note. And with that, again, I know this report went out late on Friday, so I don't know if if there was time for folks to digest it, but I'm happy to answer any questions and Becky is also on hand to to answer specific questions about any of the data.
Let's, thank you, Steven. Let's start with questions from members for council staff, then we'll go to comments from administration and clerk staff and then a round of questions for them once they've had a chance to comment, if that's okay with everybody. I see Councilmember Rallo's hand up first.
Thank you. That's a very impressive report and significant. I appreciate all the work that went into that in compiling it and it was an excellent presentation, Steven. So it looks like I would conclude in evaluating this that it's this, the standing committees are less efficient in terms of time allotted for the legislation. And I think it's safe to conclude that although no more time was required of council members, you anticipated my question about time for staff. And although you didn't compile that in terms of the amount of time for preparation and processing and those and those sorts of things, could you, it's just anecdotally give an impression? Did it seem like it required more time and effort of you or, and I'd be curious about the clerk's office and and her staff as well. Does it require more or less or about the same? I mean, just your impression?
I can certainly answer for council staff. I'll defer to the administration to to answer for for their staff members and I see Bolden here to answer for her her staff. I will say there is there is more work involved for council staff with standing committees and that's not a judgment on whether that's a good thing or bad thing. We're here to help the council do the work it wants to, but just given the nature of committees only including four members and then needing to report back to the full council in writing, those standing committee reports are often prepared either by by the committee members themselves, which is more work for you all, but often from staff as well. So coordinating those those records and documents is a bit more work. I will also say the notices that have to go out ahead of any committee meetings wouldn't necessarily be there with with committee of the whole. You know, it's often not clear where a piece of legislation will be referred before it's before it's referred. And so there's often some uncertainty of what which committee will be hearing a given piece of legislation. I will say too that, and maybe I will speak a bit on on comments I've heard from from administration staff, the ability to know exactly what time a given committee will start has been something that I've heard some staff members say they, you know, appreciate. Where before if committee of the whole had four items and you were third on the list, it often wasn't clear, you know, when you were going to be needed. And so now if a piece of, you know, if standing committees are scheduled so that, you know, each committee only has one item, staff has a clear sense of, okay, I'm going to be up at exactly 8:30 and up until then I can I can have the night off. So I mentioned downtime and I don't know if that's what the clerk will will say, but again, using December 9th as an example where there were several meetings scheduled back to back to back, there's you know, some downtime occasionally in between each of those committee meetings where one's at, one has ended, but the next one doesn't start for 15 minutes. Again, whether that's a good or bad thing, I'll leave you all. I think some people might appreciate it as possible to to get it worked on. So that's my take and I see Nicole. Maybe else have some additional comments?
What comments here? I did want to see if members had questions for the initial presentation before we go to administration and clerk. Are there any other questions from members? Councilmember Scambleri?
Thank you, and thank you for this report. Under section two, council member minutes. Okay, first of all, thank you for doing that. I think that's helpful. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're measuring here. So the 8,758 is, it assumes a council member? Question mark at the end of this. It assumes a council member does not attend any meetings other than those for their own committees, correct? So if a council member actually wanted to participate across all committees just to keep themselves informed or or just to monitor a particular issue, these numbers would grow, correct?
Correct. And Becky can correct me if I'm wrong. It did not look at how many council members actually attended any standing committee meetings. It looked at how many would normally attend based on the the number of members on that committee. So.
I'm guessing the answer to this is no, but I'll ask it anyway. For council members who wanted to attend multiple meetings, do we have a sense of what would happen to the 8,758 number? I don't, I don't know how we could.
I will say it would, it would go up because I know some council members did attend standing committee meetings of meetings of standing committees that they were not members of. So this would be the baseline. This would assume that only four members attended each standing committee meeting and I know that's not the case, so I think it would have to go up.
Okay, so anytime a council member attended a meeting that for a committee for which they were not a member, that adds on to this number for them, correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. That's my only question.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I was wondering if you know, the efficient use of time is only one aspect of the the council's work. I mean, it's important, but it's not the only important factor to consider. Did anybody look at how the the fact that usually a standing committee can, well, always it can have two meetings before reporting back to the full council. And it seems to me, just, you know, anecdotally from my perception, that this allowed time for amendments to come forward that were then discussed and it reduced the amount of making the sausage sort of stuff that we do during our regular sessions. Has there been any study of that?
I, I think I can try to tackle that. I believe Becky counted five items of legislation in 2020 that were carried over to two committee meetings. I believe she counted one such item in 2019 that the land use committee kept for two meetings and one item in 2018 that was actually kept for three standing committee meetings. In the report itself, I believe table F attempts to get at whether committee meetings made regular or special sessions more efficient by breaking out the time spent on legislative items at only regular and special sessions. Again, I don't know if that's the perfect measurement, but you can see that the either the actual total time spent where we've included each each piece of legislation over the last five years or the adjusted average, depending on how you want to look at the data, but I think that's what those those tables there are trying to show.
All right, thank you.
Other first round questions on the report as presented? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like, I don't care who would like to go first, whether it's Clerk Bolden or I see Dave DeKidd, the Director of Innovation. Could we hear comments from either of them about the report and the initiative? Ms. Kid, are you here to present for the administration or is Mr. Renison? I see, never mind. Mick Renison, Deputy Mayor, why don't you go ahead?
Sure, thank you. And I want to extend my appreciation to Steven and Becky particularly for putting the data together. It was very helpful to see this. We have no such data to share with you on our side at this stage of the game, so you can really hear from staff there experience anecdotally about how the change in committee structure worked for them or challenges it may have created. The question I always ask my staff and you've asked it amongst your council members as well is what is the problem we're trying to solve? And one of those problems I thought and I heard to echo today was efficiency and that's not the only challenge of what you were trying to solve for. From my perspective, I want to report about the efficiency from the person who schedules staff to attend the meetings at council calls. In working closely with leadership every week, you all are aware, we discuss what legislation is coming forward, whether that's being generated by the administration or the council, and then how to effectively get it on the appropriate calendar for whatever cycle you all determine is is the appropriate cycle, given the feedback we give you about the sense of urgency we have. In the new committee structure, one of the variables that was difficult for us was not knowing if it was going to go to two committee meetings or one. And while there was always the first reading and eventually a landing point in the final consideration and before the entire council, the unknown was the in-between. You didn't know if it's one or two committee meetings. And and those committee meetings, and I think this is a correctable thing if we continue with them, the committee meetings were not always at the same time or the same place, right? So one week you might have had transportation at 5:30 and then staff wouldn't know if they had to come again the next week or not until that committee met and determine whether there was another meeting or not before it finally landed in front of the entire council. Again, correctable with a little bit of planning ahead and I recognize we all went through this for this first time together, so understandably there were going to be some hiccups. The second observation I would give you is that there were essentially, the staff had to present to you twice, three times, if you count the final presentation, if there were two committee meetings. You presented to the four committee members and then you essentially had to repeat that for the nine at committee of the whole. So that's, while in the past, in the in the old structure, 2019 and prior, we would present to you at committee of the whole and then really we would come the second time and it wouldn't be so much presentation unless there were amendments, but more what questions did council have? So I think we added a layer there. Maybe it was an appropriate layer to add more for more feedback, but I just wanted to comment from the scheduling standpoint and the amount of staff time it took. Our perception was that added time to our overall amount of time and and effort going into presentations to council. Again, we'll try to be judge, the judge about whether that's a good or bad thing. It just was different in that context. That's essentially what I wanted to mention because I schedule the staff. I don't always present in front of the committees. In fact, I rarely did if at all. So I would rather that some of them speak up to the the upsides that they saw or any challenges that they saw. If you're amenable, council member, Volin, to them commenting now, I think a couple of them are ready to do so.
Before we do that, I'd like to get a brief statement from Clerk Bolden as well, as the administration summarize it. So if she's willing to talk now about it, then we can go to further comments from other department heads. Clerk Bolden?
Sure, I think I just a couple of quick notes. I think Councilmember Rallo, you asked about the impact on staff, correct? So what I would say.
That's right, yep.
All right, cool. So I would say that it increased the number of memos of the clerk just by sheer number of meetings, which is manageable. But it is something that we consider because instead of producing one document, we're producing up to five some evenings. We have seen an increase in the amount of staff time for the clerk's office, which I'm going to come back to. And then just on a I don't know quite how to phrase this a bit. Maybe I would say just from a a time management perspective for the office, if we have a staff member who's at a meeting and there's downtime in between the meetings, so you have a meeting that ends at 8:30 PM, the next meeting starts at nine, half an hour. Right now, while we're existing in the Zoom universe, it's not as cumbersome for the clerk's office, but when we're back in the office, that is something that we're going to have to consider because that means that staff member will be in the office on the clock. And every additional bit of time that we spend in the office is time that we have to accommodate for throughout the rest of the week. We don't have a lot of well, we have a pretty small budget in the clerk's office. And that means that we have to balance it out in terms of PTO or comp time. And since we actually have just taken over in the last couple of years staffing the council office, it creates it could create a bit of a burden in terms of staffing and everything else. Again, right now, this past year hasn't been a problem at all. We've been able to balance it out. People are not really supposed to be in close quarters anyway, but it is something that we're looking at moving ahead. I think I've hit everything for the most part that I wanted to discuss just in terms of quick answer, but feel free to ask me anything else. I'm here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's go to department heads and then we'll open it up to questions for administration and clerk staff. Are there department heads who want to comment on the report?
I guess I'll, I'll jump in first. I'll break my comments into two categories. Appropriation ordinances absolutely. Appropriation ordinances absolutely didn't work for appropriation ordinances. You know, that's a very prescriptive process, and we have to advertise. And the stress of not knowing when we were to advertise based on whether it was going to go to one council or one committee hearing, and then another committee hearing in the back. And the reality of it is, y'all want to hear the details that go behind appropriation ordinances. So I would suggest that regardless of what we decide, that if you continue with committees, that we just go to the normal process, committee, the whole, and regular meetings so that we have some certainty. And typically, those fall on these, so it bounces back and forth. So it also added time, just for our year-end app order, it added four weeks, which is tough when you're trying to see how much money you're going to have left over at the end of the year. So, and it rolled right after the budget process. So it was, you know, on top of another stressful year. Then, secondly, just the normal committee meetings. While we have the ability to know when we're going to be, in my case, there were several times when I was at the 6:30 meeting, and then I had to come back and, you know, do the 8:30 meeting. So, you know, being at home, that helped a little bit, but still, you know, you're kind of watching to see when things are going and when you need to be on. So that was one of the items that I brought up initially was, our office in legal ends up having to go to almost every one of these meetings anyway. So when we have them scheduled not back-to-back, or there's a break, then, you know, it doesn't provide much efficiency from our standpoint. So I'll be succinct and pass on to the next department. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Scott Robinson and then Alex Crowley.
Thanks, Councilmember Volin. I don't really have too much to add, other than what Deputy Mayor Mick Renison and Jeffrey Underwood provided. But I will say that I do want to thank council for the report and data. It's pretty interesting information. And thanks to Becky for putting that together. I noticed in Table D, I believe that planning and transportation is responsible for some of the larger meetings with the transportation plan, the comprehensive plan, and the unified development ordinance. Feedback from my staff, I think, appreciates the consistency, knowing when to attend the committee structure hearings. The unknown about the second meetings is another thing. And I think understanding kind of the repetitive nature, again, that was already discussed about how to present at each of the meetings and what information is expected, would be helpful moving forward, because again, once it goes to the whole committee, we feel like we've been doing that before. And then one thing that's not really factored into that, many of the things that we bring are actually discussed at boards and commissions prior to council. So we've been vetting through different boards and commissions prior to getting to the council schedule. So it's another additional layer of outreach and feedback that we bring to council. So it seems to be adding that when you factor in plan commission hearing, transportation or parking commission, traffic commission, you know, the other commissions we bring that into. So it begins to feel very redundant by the time we get to the repetitive structure of the committee structures. The last thing that I think I wanted to mention, and I just lost my train of thought. Put it in the chat.
We can come back to you.
Go to Alex, but thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Crowley.
Thanks, councilmembers. First of all, I not only thank you for the report, but also thank you for all the support councils provided in 2020 ESD, what was at the forefront of a lot of the response to the pandemic from a economic perspective. We really appreciate all the support. I would say a couple of things. You know, in my mind, it's, you know, you sort of have a pro and con column, right? And I think on the pro side of committees, I would say the avoidance of surprises was improved. So, you know, sometimes when you walk into a council meeting, you're not quite sure what you're going to be asked. The nice thing about the committees is that you essentially had a rehearsal, which was good. So when they were working, a lot of the issues that might have been asked were already raised. So by the time the full council meeting happened, that was helpful. I think on the con side, I would echo a couple of things that have already been said. One is just more meetings and more time that you need to spend preparing. So as you know, staff spends a fair amount of time getting ready for the meetings, and so we essentially had to double up on that, or at least, you know, increase that somewhat, which is time-consuming, especially for an apartment like ours. It's pretty thinly spread out already. And then the issue that Jeff raised, which was that the gaps in the start time, while it's more efficient and more predictable, which is nice, it does mean that your evening is, you know, sort of less, you know, less well-managed as a staff member. And so, you know, a meeting would have to start at eight o'clock. It just can get pretty late. So, you know, on balance, I think, you know, I really appreciated working with Councilmember Scambolari on a lot of the ESNR stuff, and Flurry on the climate action plan meeting that started the year, really. And I feel like, I think on balance, we probably spent more time preparing than the benefits yielded.
Thank you. Any other department heads who want to weigh in? I see Philippa Guthrie. You're muted.
Sorry. Didn't work when I tried. So I think my only real experience was I only attended one committee meeting, and it was for the fire contract. And it was kind of a breeze. You all were very generous, and you voted it up at the meeting. And then the actual council meeting, it seemed pretty easy to me. It was just a resolution, though. But I guess what it, and I understand what all of my colleagues are saying, because I've seen it. But so my experience was fine with it, but it made me wonder why it went to a committee at all, I guess. To me, it would have been just as fine going, you know, either one night, because it was a resolution, or going to the council twice in a normal cycle, in which case everybody would have heard all of the information. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. Any other department heads who wanted to weigh in before we go to questions? Seeing none, we'll open the floor to questions for department heads or the clerk. I see Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, thanks for all of that. That's very informative. And my question is about, during presentation, if you're committing, if you're presenting to the committee and not all council members are there, this could lead to redundancy in questions. So you have a repetition of a question that occurred during the committee hearing at a regular session, whereas that's unlikely to occur if the full council's there in a committee of the whole. Did any staff encounter that? And was that, I suppose it's just a repetition, but, you know, it speaks to efficiency. So-
I will jump in. Yeah, we saw that happen. The thing was, you know, you answered a number of questions in the committee meetings, and those necessarily didn't necessarily translate to the rest of the council. I think it was to Alex or Scott's point is, in a committee, the whole, they get asked, and then we've got it, you know, we would have time to formulate the answer and get it back to you. In this case, if we're going from a committee right to the council meeting, and the question comes up, sometimes we didn't have the answers for you. We'd have to communicate them after the fact. So I saw that as a downside of things, is that you didn't get the opportunity to maybe have the answer for that question between the committee meeting and the council. And in a lot of cases, you know, especially appropriation stuff, you guys were always, council members always have questions, but also on the committee meetings as well.
Thank you. That's something interesting. So there's repetition, and there's also a lack of anticipating, well, being able to determine whether a need is required, information is required when you're approaching the regular session, because you haven't had sort of the collective inquiry. Is that, that's what I'm hearing. So, thank you.
Mr. Crowley, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, repetition, you know, having said that, repetition in its own right is not necessarily a bad thing. You know, if you were asked a question, it does allow you to prepare the answer for the next time you're asked the question, right? It's so, you know, I think it merits calling that out, because I think that's really what I meant by when I was talking about rehearsal, because, but in a sense, you get a second crack at it if you need it.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in on the repetitive nature of the music, the questions. I know, you know, the committee meetings, it is helpful, you know, as Alex mentioned, to kind of get a second stab. And I appreciate the advanced questions that council members submit to staff. I think that's very helpful. Prior to the committee meetings, I think what's lost, from my perception, is that dialogue, maybe before it goes to the committee of the whole, or the whole council. I try to encourage staff to put them in writing and send them on to Nicole and her team, so it could be part of the record. So maybe there could be a way to clarify some of that, so we can avoid that repetition in the future. And then the other thing, I don't want to introduce something new here, but the last comment I wanted to provide is the transparency on amendments. I think that hasn't really happened at the committee level. It gets out of committee, and there still isn't that dialogue to understand and prepare for when we go to the whole committee. What should staff be expecting and anticipating? And again, we're kind of put into this position where we don't have time to respond and provide that information. So that would be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Further questions from members to Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Robinson just said about the amendment process not being transparent. That comes as a surprise to me, because in the land use committee, I think one of the benefits of having that committee, and we've had it, you know, for a long period of time, is that we have had amendments come to the second meeting of that committee before it comes back to the main council, and therefore, we've had more time to present them, you know, put them in the packet as finished, completely written amendments that have a committee recommendation. I mean, that has not been the case 100% of the time, but I think certainly more often than before we had the land use committee. Am I just remembering that incorrectly, Mr. Robinson? Maybe you could explain what you meant.
No, I think there's just more, there's areas for improvement with the amendment process. You know, I think it's working at the committee level, but there does seem to be harder for staff to review and get back with those amendments. I think, when I think in one of the transportation committee, there was an amendment introduced for the right-of-way permits that kicked it into another hearing, which is fine, but again, it gets into that kind of repetitive nature, and it was ready to go by the time it got to council. You know, and I think from the land use committee, I don't know the specifics on all of them. But again, I think most of them have been fleshed out, but then the question goes, when it goes to the whole council, are there other amendments that we're not aware of? And that's just kind of the unknown that I think we're faced with. I am speaking largely in response to prior to the committee structure, trying to understand that those, what other amendments out there are interest from other council members. It's hard to get that information, I think, sometimes at the committee level. So with the UDO, comprehensive plan and transportation plan, I'm not sure how well the committee structure will work for that, to be honest with you. Because again, these are big legislative pieces, and as much as I'd like to think that the land use committee will do its work, and with their recommendation coming out of that, I'm not sure that there would be amendments or questions by the whole council that could be addressed through that process. So that's really kind of more my question on that, working out those amendments and vetting those kind of Q and As at the committee level, so that there's a wider acceptance by council as a whole. That would be helpful from our perspective. I can't say one way or the other is better, but again, it gets into that redundancy of questions asked, and what do we have to go through again with the whole council? Does that make sense, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Maybe I'll just talk to you offline to make sure that we're being very clear on amendments, because I too strive for more transparency and would rather not have amendments that the public didn't see ahead of time. So we can work on that. Thank you.
Further questions from members for department heads? Okay, so let's go into debate. And when I say debate in the past, I've meant simply that there's a possibility of back and forth between members, in other words, two rounds of comments. So is there any council member who would like to comment on what they've heard so far? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think it's a little early to look at, to evaluate this process, since it's really only been just under 10 months and not a year. And also, it's been a very unusual year since we've had the pandemic, and, you know, things have moved to Zoom, and it's been a very different process for all of us. So that's just what I want to say. It seems a little early to pass judgment.
Anybody else have comments? Mr. Rallo, is that a hand raised, or?
Well, just to say that processing this right now, and I haven't really fully come to a conclusion, but I'm surprised that this hasn't really led to increased inefficiency. And in fact, this seems to have led to more, we suspected that it might lead to more staff. It hasn't. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so it hasn't led to the efficiencies in terms, it's led to more staff time and effort. It hasn't led to more efficiency in terms of council member time, which is surprising. It's about the same. So it really hasn't affected us in that sense. It's gotten some mixed reviews in terms of amendments and so forth, and maybe some prep time. It is, it seems to me that it might have caught some staff off guard by having less ability to anticipate some of the questions that one would receive at committee of the hall. So the point is, is that it's a bit complicated. I'm not sure that we need another year to evaluate this. So I think that 10 months has given us some data and impressions. And if anything, I think the Zoom has helped matters in terms of downtime. So I'm still evaluating it, but those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Flaherty?
Sure. I actually don't have particularly well-organized thoughts yet either. Read the report. I appreciate staff putting that together, certainly, and looking at some of that data. And as acknowledged in the report, there's just kind of a lot of challenges to get any sort of apples-to-apples comparison on use of time. You know, one small example, Zoom this year has allowed perhaps greater participation than, you know, than other meetings. And there's a lot of things like that. But I think more important to me is that, A, is that time is sort of an odd metric of success, for one. So I'm curious to hear, maybe over the coming weeks, from other council members and from department heads, you know, what other metrics they would like to consider, considering the success or not of any way that we might organize our legislative structure. You know, too short of a duration may indicate poor quality decision-making, or, you know, or it may not. And too long of a duration may indicate inefficiencies, or it may not. Comparing current durations to the durations of the last several years, of course, anchors us to the durations of the last several years, as if those were a good duration. Maybe the current duration's good, you know, but there's not a whole lot of difference there, anyway. More interesting to me is kind of some of the things- lot of difference there anyway. More interesting to me is kind of some of the things that Scott Robinson mentioned and others around submitting questions, how amendments work. I think the point, part of the point Scott was making was that when you go to a committee, the whole meeting, which is by its nature, just one meeting, and you come back to second reading, inevitably, all of the amendments come at second reading, when the thing will likely be voted on. And if they're coming in, you know, there's a one week time period to prepare those. They're probably coming in on Monday, Tuesday, maybe even Wednesday. And I think staff has been, you know, felt that they were caught off guard about amendments and pile, you know, a response to them. So I think there's, there's problems. I think there's pros and cons with with the use of standing committees and with committee of the whole. I think whichever one we go with, or some combination of the two, we can and should work to improve those processes in both cases or either case. So I think, yeah, I'm curious to keep thinking more about this. And that includes, you know, how, how, how staff works too. So Clerk Bolden, for instance, mentioned, you know, preparing multiple memos for committee meetings. They're not minutes, but they're a memo that's different, which was, you know, a higher volume of those. I know we had a conversation a few weeks ago about, kind of about that, about meeting scheduling that I'm curious to follow up on. I don't know, just more to think about, I guess. For me, I think. I don't know. I'm just kind of rambling, looking at my notes. I'm sorry. Yeah, I think there's a lot more to think about here than than total time of meetings. And I'm going to keep thinking about that.
Thank you. Councilman Sandberg?
Yes, I too agree that there is more reflection time needed about both the pros and the cons that were presented to us today. And my hope is that we can incorporate both the best of how standing committees operated with what some of the issues were, and come up with some sort of a hybrid approach. I appreciated what Ms. Guthrie had to say about the one meeting that she did attend, which again, was a breeze. And that's the kind of thing that could very easily go to the committee of the whole. It does not need the slicing and dicing from a specialized subcommittee. And therefore, we could do some time saving and then go back to what I always appreciated the most about the committee of the whole. And it probably has more to do with my learning style and how I process information is for me to be able to hear it and see it in real time myself in order to make a good decision. And what has not been particularly effective for me in my decision making responsibilities is it's almost kind of like the game of telephone where you're getting it second hand from a committee of four, who may or may not have seen things or picked up on things as I could have done, had I been an active participant in that committee meeting. And so that's one concern that I have always had, you know, with with respect to this change. The other has to do with the public participation. And while on the one hand, Zoom has been a real benefit to people who wouldn't otherwise come to council chambers to participate in things. There has been a little bit of what I, and I don't know how best to say this, a little bit of, and this is a kind of the issue with social media, is maybe a little easier to be, God, I don't want to use the word bully, but, you know, to maybe not be as collegial as you might be if you were in person, face to face with somebody. And so I think there is the ease of people accessing Zoom during this pandemic. And then there is the lack of quality of interacting in maybe more civil fashion. And so there are trade offs there, too. And of course, we are, we are all dealing with the realities of Zoom and the realities that we may be in Zoom for for quite a while. But I do think it's not been the be all, end all for public participation. It might have helped in some regards, but it may have actually served to shut people down who don't want to enter into these Zoom rooms if they're going to be attacked or called names or what have you. So that's something to look at, too, as we move forward. We all want to be transparent. We all want staff to be well prepared to answer the questions. But we, as council members, are the decision makers. We're the ones that need to digest the information, use our own frame of references in order to cast responsible votes. And so I'm hoping that in time, we can take the best of and the worst of and combine them to use the committee of the whole more for items that do not need that additional scrutiny or or management from council that can allow our professional staff to do their jobs and report to us directly, and for us then to make responsible votes that are in the best interest of our public. Thank you.
Thank you. Other debate? Anybody want to speak? I see Councilman Scambaluri, then Councilman Smith?
Thanks. Couple of things I just observations I have. One of the points of discussion we all have is, do we need more time to evaluate this? We've had 10 months. Do we need longer to? And oh, by the way, this year is a statistical outlier. We have a pandemic. We have so many other things. What I keep coming back to is that every year has a potential to be a statistical outlier. I'm not a member, but I find it helpful to hear different questions about legislation. So I would observe that, again, for how I learn, particularly as a relatively new council member, it's helpful to me to hear all that. And it's taking longer with this model. One of the things I shared in a message or in a meeting many, many months ago, was that my interest and commitment to committees extends only as far as its ability to produce better legislation and better decisions. And that's what I'm thinking about. That's what I need to think more about. Did this system actually make us better at this? And did we pass better legislation? One of the things we're still missing, or one piece of this puzzle that we're, I would love to find a way to gather feedback from the public about this. My guess is there will be many members of the public who care less than not at all about whether we have committees or don't have committees or whatever. But for those who were impacted by this, who care deeply about an opportunity to comment on an issue, I'd like to see us find a way to invite public comment on that or public feedback on committees as well. It seems to me we have three options at this point where committees are concerned. One, keep them in their current form and let them continue to work. Two, eliminate them and perhaps just go back to Jack Hopkins and sidewalk and land use, or refine what we have. And right now, I'm leaning toward refine. I think we have some opportunities to actually do that. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. It seems that collectively, when you look at the report and you hear city staff, collectively, we have spent more time in doing the legislation, debating, doing resolutions and conducting our business in our interface with the city. And so that's just an observation after looking at the report and hearing everyone. From my perspective, we have, it somewhat has fragmented how I have understood different pieces of legislation and different processes that have gone on. And I think the transmission of, so if Dave had a meeting or a committee or Matt did, and then we come back to our council, regular council meeting. I know that there's, you know, a report, a transmission of that, what happened, kind of three to one or whatever. I felt like I didn't, I didn't learn those things that I would have really liked to learn. And so for that, then there, then there was some repetitive questioning from council members, including especially, I'll speak for myself. And I think that was the nature of the structure, that there's a standing committee, and then they come before us and they say, this is what happened, or we get a little written report. So I found, I found that that was just inherent in it, that there's going to be some repetition, because transmission of that information is really, it's really challenging. It's like, I forgot who said telephone. It's like playing telephone a little bit. So I think refining, refining it, I'm going to go to say, kind of agree with council member Scambaluri, that it's maybe it's a refinement of the whole process. And I haven't come down and figured out exactly what I feel about it. But I think this is a great discussion. And I think that everybody really has had great comments. And so, so I appreciate the input from the city and from my fellow members. And I, I, that's about all I had to say today.
Thank you. Any other members? First round comment, first round comments? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you very much. And first of all, I want to thank the president for scheduling this special session. And in particularly, council staff for drawing up this raw data objective report. It was just raw data. It is what it is. It wasn't leaning one side or the other. And I appreciate that down the middle approach. I've had an opportunity to speak with many of my colleagues one on one. Obviously, nothing in a group setting that, you know, but individually. And on some of those conversations, the hybrid approach or a different way of looking at the standing committee structure has been mentioned. And not, not every time, but, but that is an interesting approach. But I think what's most important here, and I will say this, I think it is very appropriate, and not too early to begin having these discussions. We're not making a decision today. We're not going to vote today. Two main reasons. There's the possibility that we'll have new council leadership moving into the new year. And I think this structure should be discussed and evaluated. And I'm interested, and I think as my colleagues are, that the will of the council is very, very important moving forward. I will mention as well that when we created these last year, the vote was five to four in order to move it. So I still think with that close vote, it warrants more discussion, not necessarily decision making today, but more discussion. And the intent in my mind is to, A, how does this structure affect those that must deal with it? So I thought it was very important to hear the report from the council staff today, to hear from the clerk's office. I'm not so sure if the public understands how all this works together and how many, how much, how this affects the clerk's time, as far as minutes and drafting reports. Department heads and administration, I've had the pleasure of last year on trying to help schedule many of these for our calendar. So these aren't new issues. It's not a make or break thing. I just think it warrants discussion. And lastly, how does it affect other council members? One of the things with the time that was, the time of council members, that's part of this report, and what it did not include, and it probably shouldn't have. But what if I, as an individual council member, chose to log in on other committee meetings, that I'm not a part of that committee? And I know that's subjective at this point. But how much more would that add to my time as an individual or the group of council members if we chose to do that? And the bottom line is that unless you want to wait until second reading and resolution or the committee of the whole, that if you really want to get into the the crux of what's discussion, then you need to log in. But how would that affect you personally? So that's one of the things that I think it's important to just to begin this discussion. I don't, in many cases, think we're passing judgment at this point. I just think it's important to to hear what people feel that this affects. And I think we'll talk about that moving forward. I will say it's okay not to have well organized thoughts at this time. I think it's, we're jumbling around. I mean, we've heard some things today. Some of us knew that. So it's okay to not have well organized thoughts today. And I anticipate they'll get more condensed and focused as we move forward. Again, there may be other metrics other than time, and I'm sure there is. That's why it's important to hear from a lot of folks. Mainly, how do the people that this structure affects? And last, or not necessarily lastly, but I will repeat again, I think it bears repeating, what is the will of the council moving forward? I'm not so much concerned, well, I want to work well, and I think we all do, work well with staff and administration and others on the schedule. But I want to make it clear that none of those entities have any super duper direct influence on how the council handles their business. I just think it's important for us to hear from others that it affects. I was very interested to hear about public comment. That is very, very important. But I think the main thing with public comment is that in either structure that is chosen, then the public feels comfortable and that they'll have a right to make comment in whichever structure that we'll end up with. One thing for sure, as we move forward, even if we get back to in person meetings, Zoom and electronic public comment is in the foreseeable future, is always pretty much going to be a part of our structure and operation as we move forward. So again, another reason to have these discussions, I think. So I think it's very appropriate to have this, to begin this discussion. And in my mind, there was no intent to make a decision today. That was not the intent. And I think in order to make a proper evaluation, a proper decision, that you need to gather as much information as you can, then form your thoughts and your position, then we move forward. So I don't want to use a lot of time, probably use a whole five minutes. I'm sorry. But I think it's important that we begin these discussions today as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thanks. I'll just give some thoughts there in a completely random order, I would say. I think this has been a good discussion so far. I do like the question of, you know, not a question, but efficiency, I think, isn't the only way to come at this. And we've heard a lot from staff and council members about other things to consider, predictability, I think collaboration, like what makes the best legislation, better understanding of legislation for council members and the public, and then increased public engagement. So I think really, like thinking critically through, right, like what do we want this process to be like for us, for staff and for, and for the public is really important. And I mean, I think really good legislation is important, but it's not always necessarily even the priority, right? Because we want folks working together and understanding. And of course, we all want to understand something before we vote on it. So I think understanding is really important, just kind of piggybacking on Councilmember Sims and saying, I understand you get it better if you're involved in the meetings. I think one point, too, is we can go to all the committee meetings if we want. I think, like, asking, what problem are we trying to solve is one approach. I also think asking something like, how can we make this better is another approach. I don't like coming at anything like the way we're doing it is the way it should be done. I think that's just because it's the way we're doing it. But also, I don't like thinking the way we're doing it is broken, just because that's the way we're doing it. So, you know, I don't know, I think thinking very holistically there and just like, are there improvements we can make based on complaints? I mean, coming in this year, I, I heard a lot of how unpredictable committee of the whole was for staff. So I think like, one thing we were trying to solve is helping staff know when they hop online. And I don't know, that's been helpful for me, too. I've definitely done the 6:30 start time and then 8:30 start time. And I have like eaten and walked my dog in the middle. So it was useful for me, at least to know that I had that little bit of time in there. One thing that I thought about, I don't think has been mentioned, is like, standing committees to me has been good because it's given every council member a chance to lead and chair a committee. And I think with four new council members, at least for me, that was like really important and a really low stress way to enter into leadership, I would say, that I was chairing a meeting with three others. And it was a little, it felt like lower stakes and more of like an exploratory situation instead of something as rigid, maybe as committee of the whole, or like, I don't, it just felt very accessible. And I liked that a lot. And also gave me a chance to really deep dive into an issue that's important to me, like chairing the transportation committee is an interest of mine and something I know. a lot about, so I liked, I liked that a lot. I think I hear about refinement, I think that's also a good idea. Mr. Underwood talking about how app orgs didn't make sense really in standing committees, and I can see that, too, where a lot of them, we, we all might not have a lot of questions, and we're sort of just hearing an update and voting on that. I can see where Committee of the Whole might make that process happen faster. There was one Transportation Committee I was in, okay, I think sometimes, like, going to a second Standing Committee meeting is not, is not always a bad thing, and it doesn't necessarily mean just that the process is longer. I think we haven't really talked about, sometimes we get legislation that isn't necessarily ready. And there was an instance in the Transportation Committee where I was working with staff on a piece of legislation, and staff was going to introduce it for first reading, and I asked if we could not do that yet because there are still tweaks that I wanted to make, and staff did it. It went to Transportation Committee, and it wasn't ready. Think the idea of council members collaborating more with staff, sometimes, you know, not a lot of us, but like, how I just did that on one issue that was important to me, I think that helps legislation be, you know, more ready when it hits us in the first place. So I think that is a way to increase efficiencies, whether we switch to Committee of the Whole or keep standing committees, but something we don't really talk about, like, what does this look like and what shape is it in when we get it? One last thing, I hear is talking about standing committees. We have, all council committees here or not, we have Sidewalk, we have Jack Hopkins, so if folks are not really liking when we divide up and conquer something with those two committees, also then be changed to a Committee of the Whole situation. I don't know if that has been mentioned. So that's where I am right now, just a lot of comments. Happy to keep this going. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I guess it's my turn. This has been a very interesting discussion. I've heard a lot of things that I was surprised to hear, some pleasantly, some unpleasantly, but, you know, the, the discussion is, has been more than worthwhile. I do want to point out, though, a number of, if you do a close reading of the numbers, as I've had the benefit of being able to do this weekend in particular, I would call your attention to the following statistics. The average Committee of the Whole meeting, you can see it in Table C, reached a six-year high. So that's one example, I mean, 164 minutes is all-time high for the past six years. That's not explicable by the existence of standing committees. The increase in meetings overall that we've had, you can see in Table A, there was a spike in numbers from 2015 to 2016. Twenty minutes per meeting appreciated not having to deliberate on every issue every week. But most of all, I think it's obvious that the coronavirus had the same effect on our meetings this year as it did in turnout in the presidential election. Because we made it possible for people to attend remotely, participation went up significantly in our meetings, and it increased our meeting times. When you take out outliers, something I'm not sure we should be doing, but, okay, the average item went from 70 minutes in the previous years to 100 minutes to dispose of, which was well above the average. While the adjusted average minutes per legislative item in Table E was highest in 2020 by a full half hour, 70 to 100 minutes, more than half that increase can be seen in the adjusted average minutes per item in regular or special session, which went up 17.5 minutes. So that's the clearest sign of the 2020 effect, that COVID has forced us to meet virtually, but it also made our meetings more accessible, more people took part. If and when we can break down exactly how much time was spent taking public comment, we're going to see that this is the, the reason for that increase in numbers. So I agree that the numbers do not tell a single story, but I also think that committees are doing what they were designed to do. Efficiency, as more than one person has said, is not the only principle that council should be considering when it's doing its considerations. Predictability is important. Collaboration is important, and time to collaborate is necessary to make amendments. Deliberation is most important of all, and, you know, every time, you know, a member of the public, or members of the public come out to protest some issue that we're discussing, and they say, why haven't I heard about this before? You know, we should slow down and take more time to think about it. Well, that was the idea, at least one of the ideas behind using this system. So I think that there's, you know, also, the, the system was not meant to be monolithic. You know, I can already see one change that we should make. There was at least one committee that got no legislation referred to it, another one that got one. We should, we should consolidate, I think, the Housing, Utilities, and Community Affairs Committees into a catch-all committee, because part of the primary goal of committees was to hear legislation. And if a committee is not really hearing legislation, while it might be important, maybe that's something for an ad hoc committee to do if they, if they're, if an issue comes up. But otherwise, you know, I think we should, you know, one reason for there being nine committees was to ensure that no member felt that other members were getting extra assignments over them. And that's proven to be not an issue for anybody. So if we have six or seven committees, I think that's fine. I think that, let's see, we, another, another thing I think is really important to point out is, one of my goals in implementing a committee system was to ensure deliberation that four weeks for legislation became the standard. But how often did we actually take four weeks, you know, through the committee system to deliberate on something? Out of 170 items over the past three years, exactly seven went to more than one committee meeting. Now, that's not really fair in 2018 and 19, when the only committee there was land use, but this year, there were five out of more than 50, almost 60 items, that went to multiple meetings. In fact, I could even recite exactly the ordinances that went to, to more than one meeting. Century Village, CDG Motel 6, The Curry Property in Third and Longview, Chandler's Glen and Trinitas, all very large projects, a Title 15 update this year, the CAPS Commission, and the Title 12 update on excavations and sidewalks. Those are the only ones. Everything else came back after one meeting. So the system is working the way it was designed. We didn't need for most items to go to a second committee hearing, but we had the option, and no one had to beg for it. And that was the principle behind make, and if, if anyone wants some assurance, you should assume that it should take four weeks, not two, for legislation to pass. And when council comes back early, it's a bonus. And most of the time, we've been offering bonuses. So, but, you know, it's important to preserve that ability to deliberate without having to make a special request. So I'll leave it at that. I would say that, if there's one more thing I wanted to say, it's that, you know, the vote, we have lots of 5-4 votes for committees. I seem to recall that the Fourth Street Garage passed by a 5-4 vote. If we changed our minds about that, it's a little, little bit to, to change. Is it the same kind of decision? No. But, you know, 5-4 votes matter just as much as 9-0 votes do, because the majority has to rule. Now, I think that the majority is clearly, you know, in favor of modifying the system. I join them. You know, I think we should modify the system. What I don't think we should do is give up the basic principles here. It's not just about efficiency. I think that if there are certain staffs, the council staff, the clerk's staff, and the controller's staff, who have a greater obligation because of the way that we schedule things, you know, we need to take that into consideration. We also need to weigh it against the benefit to council members and to other department heads who don't have to sit through four-hour-long committees of the whole. And we should think about things like skipping committee altogether for easy legislation. We should think about conducting Committee of the Whole within a regular session, which is originally what it was designed to do in Roberts. That's the idea. But these are all innovations that we can take into account as we start the new year. With that, if there's any opportunities that members would like to have to rebut comments that they've heard, now's their opportunity. Any second comments? Last call for second comments? Okay, well, I would urge everyone to look at the report as closely as they can. There's a lot of valuable knowledge in it. I want to say big props to Becky Bustani, who put this together. By the way, she has, the rumor is she has this gigantic spreadsheet with all the data from the past six years that she used to cull this data together. And I'm looking forward to seeing the raw data, too, because it's interesting. But she heroically compiled it, and I just want us to acknowledge her work. It was really great, and this report is definitely worth reading. I have, see a comment for Mr. Rineson, if Ms. Bustani wants to comment, and Mr. Lucas will do that as well.
Just real quick. Thank you. I just wanted to thank the council. We ask you, when we deliberated, excuse me, the creation of this last year, for an opportunity to provide feedback at the end of the year, and you accommodated us, so I appreciate that. And we'd also like you to consider, as you debate, what might change in the next year, if anything, that you involve us in the process, because I think collaboratively, as you have suggested so often, is the best way to move forward. So we wouldn't, we would not disagree, in fact, would readily welcome the opportunity to collaborate with you on a process that works to meet all our goals, efficiency only being one of them. There are many more valuable things to consider. So thank you for consideration and look forward to working with you.
Same. Thank you. Ms. Bustani, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I understand the efficiency is not everything. That's the only data that was available. So what I would suggest going forward, if we have committees or not committees, is to plan ahead what we want to keep track of, so that way, it'll just be easier. So if we want another report at the end of the year, we have all the data that we're interested in, so.
It's a very good point. Two that I would say, for example, tracking amendments, how long it takes us to process an amendment is something that we could send a breakdown of. And public comment, how much time we spend in public comments on, on legislative items? Any other suggestions for Becky to track that anybody else has? Clerk Bolden? You're muted.
I was just going to say, I, it might be helpful if you're tracking that information. Also, Becky, a lot of the votes are actually included on the roll call sheets that may not be part of the minutes. So if you're tracking some of those things, you can actually see where things are introduced and voted on. So, yeah.
Thank you. That's a good point. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I was just going to say, with the amendments, it would be really interesting to see at what point in the process they were introduced and whether they went into a public packet prior to the meeting, and prior to the day of the meeting, let's say it that way.
That's right. I mean, members had the privilege of amending right up to the, right before the vote, and unless we want to address, have a policy for a deadline for amendments, we have to track the different points at which they enter the process. It's a very good point. Any other data collection thoughts? Mr. Sims?
Thank you. Lastly, I'll say, and I'll piggyback on Councilmember Scambaluri, and since she's been on this council, one of the things that she's asked about is, is measurements. How do we measure a thing? And I think that's important going along, but one of the things I think that's very difficult to measure, and it's important lies individually, and that is with each of the nine council members, based on their experiences, what they have dealt with throughout the course of this year and previous years. And I think that is as important as some of the efficiencies or lack thereof. There are many, many prongs to this. One way, and, and that's why we'll have conversations moving forward, and I've heard the word collaborative, I've heard a couple of different words, but what's important is that we hear from each and every in the first place, and then others that it affect. One thing that I do know, and I think most council members would agree with this, you can affect, or we as council members can have some effect in efficiencies based on our calendar scheduling of legislation. So that's one of the things that wasn't really mentioned today, but a lot of it starts there. And when you talk about collaborations, that's when you might have discussions with administrative staff and, and department heads with regard to priorities. What are some of the legal and mandatory code things that has to be addressed? What are some of the other things that we want to address that are very useful, but not necessarily would have the highest priority of, of something that's statutorily required? So I just want to, again, we'll have these discussions. It's in the yes or no thing today, but there's a lot to think of, and the scheduling, I will emphasize, is one of those as an emphasis toward more efficiencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, did you have any closing comments?
No, I, I just wanted to echo the thanks that you all expressed to Becky for putting this report together. She put a lot of work into it, and there are certainly things moving forward that we can keep track of, and knowing those things is certainly helpful, rather than having to go back and kind of capture those, glean those from other records. So thank you all for, for the guidance, and again, appreciate the, the opportunity to touch base on this topic. And I will note that the council organizational meeting is scheduled for January 6th. The use or, or any changes to standing committees that council members want to make do not have to be made that day, but if there are changes that anyone would like to have prepared ahead of that meeting, you should reach out to let staff know. But again, standing committees were, were in 2020, I believe Resolution 2001 was passed in late February, so it's, it's also possible to make changes throughout the year, so just keep that in mind.
Thank you. And with that, I think we'll call this a year. Thank you all for coming to this meeting today. I really appreciate everyone being willing to meet this late in the year, since we usually stop by the previous Wednesday. Thanks to everyone who offered their comments. And I do want to encourage people to start writing out their ideas for how we can improve the way that we do business, not just, you know, for all the different principles that we're trying to uphold. Again, thank you all. Happy holidays, and we'll see you in the new year, and let's hope the next one is better than this one. Bye-bye, everybody.
Happy holidays, everyone.
This meeting's adjourned.